We already.
I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, July 12th, 2021, and the time is 7:00 PM. We are present this evening in our new school board meeting room located at Northfield Public Schools District Offices, formerly Longfellow School. This meeting is open to the public.
Yep, just bring it just a little bit closer.
Thanks, Noel. This meeting is open to the but public and is being livestreamed. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Dr. Hillman, there were some items in the table file.
Yes, this evening we had an updated version of the school bus transportation contract with Benjamin Bus. And we also had some appointments, some increased, decreased change in assignment, and that was it. Some personal items.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Oh, sure.
Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for residents, business and property owners, parents, students and employees of the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we can move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, we have two this evening. Nika Hirsch is a ten-year-old student from Greenville Park, and she has been recognized with the Diana Award, established in memory of Diana Princess of Wales for her social action and humanitarian efforts. Nika was diagnosed with selective mutism, and her family suggested she find other nonverbal ways to express herself. She decided to paint rocks and hide them in her community for others to find and delight in. She started a giving tree program to share warm clothes in the winter and a gratitude tree to encourage people to adopt an attitude of gratitude in the summer. Nika has created videos about her creative projects, sharing moments of joy and kindness on social media. She is known as someone who creates little ripples of kindness that turn into big waves. So congratulations, Nika. What a wonderful award for this young person and a modeling for others what we should be doing to make our community a better place. We also want to recognize several state tournament participants. And we lead off with Nate Stevens, a rising Northfield High School senior who won the state golf meet. And so if you followed Nate's career, you know, he's been at the top of his age group for some time. And I encourage people to check out, there was a really cool little featurette on Bally Sports North, where one of their reporters talked with Nate. And so congratulations to Nate Stevens, a state champion in golf. Anna Nesseth also participated in the state high school girls golf meet. And we had several participants in the state track meet. We want to congratulate Shelby Sveen, who placed third in the Discus at State, Clara Lippert, Josie Houck, Erica Lowe, Nicole Tierbarth, Wendy Boleum, Adriana Fleming, they were made it to state in the four-by-eight-hundred relay, Devin Jacks in the high jump, and then the four-by-eight relay team of Martin Bryce, Nathan Amundson, Sam Folland, Will Tadona, A.J. Reaster, Will Beaumaster, and Devin Jacks. So congratulations to those athletes on competing at their state meet. And again, congratulations to Nate Stevens, state champion. Those are your announcements for this evening.
Excellent. Thank you. If, is there anything board members would like to add? Okay, we'll move on now to items for discussion and report. And we first will welcome the First Annual School Resource Officer Annual Report. And here to present that is Northfield Police Chief Mark Elliott and our School Resource Officer Bart Weiss.
Chairman, members of the school board, thank you for having us here today. We have a unique opportunity, I guess, the first time to present to you on the School Resource Officer Program of the Northfield Police Department, which is a partnership for safety and learning in the Northfield Public Schools. And I have our current School Resource Officer Bart Weiss with me. He'll have part of the presentation as well, and I wanted you to be able to put a name with the face and the one that's in our schools all the time. I had the luxury of being a School Resource Officer early in my career, found it to be very rewarding and really added to my abilities as a police officer, but also really added to my understanding of the hard work that you folks do and that your staff does every day in providing for a very safe and successful learning environment within the schools. So thank you for the work that you do and your staff. We currently have an officer assigned in the Northfield Schools, and Bart, as I said, is that officer. And he goes by Officer Bart in the schools. As officers, we all have our last name on our, our nameplates for our uniforms. But Bart actually approached me and said, can I get a nameplate that says Officer Bart? Because that's what all the kids call me. And I said, that seems to make sense. Let's do that. So we have Officer Bart with us today. And he's assigned to be in the schools, and he is to be present to interact with, with the students before, during, and after the school's day, as well as attend special events. He interacts with the students between classes, opportunity to build rapport with the students, and to support students and staff and their activities and support learning and safety throughout the day. He assists administration with questions and shares information as permitted. As you guys are well aware, Minnesota Data Practices Law covers a lot of the school and learning information, as well as a lot of the law enforcement and police information. So we share where we're able to and where it's permitted, and assist each other with going about our work. He does a lot of assisting social services, social workers and counselors, we're serving the needs of the students and providing for student safety and support. He instructs the DARE program. We also have one off, one other officer that instructs the DARE program. And that's been suspended for the past fifteen months with COVID, and then the hybrid learning at the request of the district, but we're ready to pick that up again as soon as you're ready to have us. And he's a guest speaker for classes, law, constitution, health classes, anywhere where his job intersects with the learning of the students, he's more than happy to come in and be a guest speaker. Next slide, please. I wanted to touch just briefly on the Northfield Police Policy Review Task Force. This is something that we undertook at the Northfield Police Department this past year, and it was coincided with the implementation of a brand-new policy manual lined with twenty-first century policing practices, police reform changes, well as recent legislative changes related to police work. Next slide. We had a diverse cross-section of our community with task force members. And as you look at the list here, you'll see that Northfield Public Schools was very well represented by Principal Nancy Antoine, and as well as just many community partners that the school has too. When you look down this list, there are people that we worked with from the police department or their institutions are, and you'll see that they're ones that you folks work very closely with as well. Next slide. So the policies that we reviewed, we had about thirty policies that had a nexus to police reform topics that we included in the review. So our policy manual has hundreds of policies. We didn't include the policies that cover like when these guys can take breaks and that type of thing for the task force. But we wanted to be sure that we included those that did have a police reform nexus. And one of the things that really came out of there that was a little surprising to us was that there, when we got into the deep questions or on some of the policies, there weren't a lot of policy or questions on the policies themselves. Once the committee reviewed them, they discussed them, they talked about them. Yep, that makes sense. But they had a lot of requests for information. They wanted to know how officers get their training, what type of training they get, what is their equipment used for? What type of calls do they receive here in Northfield? They hear about the number of shootings in, on the metro news all the time, but what does that translate to in our community? And what we came out of that with was really a need for more information sharing to occur with our community. So that's a a direction we're going to try to take the police department in the next year or two with some additional information sharing to make sure that the community has that information. One of the first ones we did was the Community Crime Map, and that's available online, so everybody in the community can go in and look at the crimes that are reported in our community. Next slide, please. So one of the things that came out of that Policy Review Task Force was questions about police training. And I wanted to share a little bit of that with you folks. You guys are very well aware that teachers need continuing education credits. And their licensing cycle goes five years. Each five years, they have to have a number of credits that they receive in continuing education. Well, police officers fall into that same thing. They're licensed by the state, and the state requires that they have forty-eight required continuing education credits every three years when they renew. Those are in a variety of topics, some mandated by the post board and some are up to the department and the officer as far as where that training comes. But I have a few listed here on the screen. Question or classes in procedural justice, implicit bias, duty protect, policing protests, immigration law, ethics and professional conduct. Those are just some examples of some of the classes the officers get, as well as quite a bit of in-person training that we brought into the department and into the county here. Our CIT, which handles critical incident training or responding to people in mental health crisis. It's a forty-hour class that every police officer in Northfield receives, and then receives a sixteen-hour refresher every licensing cycle. Classes on racial equity training and implicit bias. The Government Alliance on Race and Equity. I know a few years ago, the school district was a partner in bringing that into Northfield and going through those classes. Response to civil unrest, the YMCA's Equity Leadership Institute, as well as the city-sponsored speakers training. The police department is very instrumental in trying to get our racial equity core team up and running here in the city and making sure that we have training for all city employees, as well as our police officers. So I mentioned that the, the state requires our officers to have forty-eight hours of training. We just renewed seven of our officers this year whose license were, were due, and the average for those officers was about two hundred hours of training. So you can see here in Northfield, we take training to be a very important part of the officer's job, and we want to make sure that they are well-trained and they get the training that they need to do their job. Next slide, please. Unfortunately, there are threats that we have at the schools that we don't like to think of. School violence is a reality. Since 2000, there have been forty-four shootings in pre-K through twelve schools in the US. And in seventy-six percent of the shootings in education settings, police response is what stopped the killing. The SRO provides an immediate response, often from within the building. A strong knowledge of building layout, as well as relationships with students and faculty to encourage and respond to concerns and for early reporting are instrumental in preventing violence. There have been numerous times when we've had threats reported on social media or from a teacher or student of someone who came to them with information that was concerning. And often it is either that student or that faculty that immediately gets a hold of our SRO to address it. And those often occur outside of his regular hours in the school. A next slide, please. And these don't just happen somewhere else. I'm going to have SRO Bart Weiss here talk about a few of those calls that he's responded to just in the past year or two.
Thank you, Chief Elliott, and thank you for the invitation for tonight. One of them I wanted to talk about was we had a pipe bomb that was not at the school, but was out in our community. And all we had to go off of was the actual pipe bomb itself, and one of our citizens took a picture of someone. So when I showed up, I was able to look at the picture, saw that it was probably a juvenile, a juvenile age, and I was able to reach out to the appropriate administration on the school board or on the schools to see if you can help us identify this person, which we, we quickly solved and was able to move on from there. Other, other areas, I, social media threats. We have social media threats before, after, in the middle of the night. I've had many calls where tried to stop the threat or try to figure out where the threat came from, so our young people can go back to school. And we would never let young people go back in the school if we knew that the threat was valid, or we didn't have it solved before the school day started. Other incidents is with juveniles, there's absolutely a lot of runaways that we, that we deal with. And I like when I get those calls because I work with students and I'm the officer that I can text these students. And I, in the past two weeks, I've texted these students, and I'm the one that they respond to after they haven't responded to anybody, whether it's law enforcement, parent, or anybody trying to help. And I've, I've had to pick kids up in different cities, or called, called other students, or even if a student was in a different state. We've talked back and forth to actually figure out where you are and if you're safe or not. Those are some of the, the face, when they see my face, or when they hear my name, the trust that I've built with these students in the SRO program. One of those other things that's, I always like to bring up, if you want to stop a lunchroom, if you want to stop lunch, disrupt a lunch in a middle school after they've been through DARE program, I can pretty much stop a lunch there too. So that's real fun. Played bingo with those students. But that DARE program is really good. I'm getting off topic about the threats. Something I want to bring up, what I bring back to the community. Also want to bring up to you that I've been doing this job for fourteen years. I've been in the school setting. I'm coming up to my fifth year, and this is absolutely the best position I've had as a law enforcement officer. You guys have a great community, great teachers, great students. Thank you.
Thank you, Bart. I wanted him to be able to add that real portion of it, of this is really how we're able to meet with the community, to meet the needs of the community and safety. And I've had that same thing. As a former DARE officer, as a former SRO, five, ten years later, I've had students, former students get a hold of me to report a crime that they're concerned about, but they wanted to go to someone they trust, or those runaways that have been gone in the middle of the night, and everybody's working to get them back, but they just won't respond to every, anybody. But you have connections, you know, other friends, and they can get a hold of them, and they'll say, well, but it's Bart, and you can get a hold of him. You can trust him, and he will, he'll help keep you safe. He's not just going to bring you home to the environment that you weren't comfortable in. He's going to help find another alternative for you. So those relationships that are built in the school are really important for safety in our community. Next slide, please. We talked for, talk about partners for safety. We're talking about a lot of things that the SRO is involved in. From the mock crash that we do before prom and graduation to try to drive home the importance of having a safe night for those students. We want them to have a memorable experience. We want that to be a positive, memorable experience. We don't want tragedy to strike. To supporting those, those events like prom and graduation, and being there to help our young people safely celebrate those milestones in their, in their life. Events like Shop With The Cop or the Bike To School Day, which our officers and our students both like, a good opportunity to interact and safely get to school. Our DARE program, which we've talked about, even things like school bus stop, stop arm violations. I know you guys have transportation as a topic on your topic, on your agenda today, and working with the bus companies to make sure our kids safely get to and from, and educate those drivers through enforcement and through talking to them if they're not safely giving our children the space they need to get off, off and on those buses. And then other activities, events, rock revival just happened. We're all good opportunities for us to not only provide safety, but create positive relationships with those students as well. Next slide. And we talk about our officers, we talk about our future officers, an opportunity to build relationships and trust within that relationship of the SRO, as well as career exploration for our students. We're always at the career day. There's a picture up here of us at the middle school for a career day, and we always get a lot of students that want to come and touch the equipment and see it and ask questions. But this isn't also an opportunity for these students to see their neighbors, their friends, their parents. Many of our officers live in the community. Thirty percent of the Northfield Police Officers are Northfield School graduates. We want to see that grow. One of our newer officers, Officer Eichlumberg, is a graduate of Northfield Schools. And she was one that her first contact with the Northfield Police Department was in middle school when she was being a typical middle school, school student, maybe having some run-ins with the police and some little brush-ups. And really, it was that relationship with the SRO that she felt was a safe person to go to and to help her make some good decisions and guide some of the decisions in her life. And she talks about becoming a police officer was because of that relationship with the SRO. And that's what inspired her to do that. So we're talking about, this is a kid that grew up in Viking Terrace and a single-parent family and was open to a lot of different influences, but that relationship helped guide her in a positive way. And we're very, very fortunate to have her as one of ours now, and she looks forward to being able to give back to the community too. We want to recruit from, and we want to be reflective of our community at the police department, and we feel that our opportunity to be in the schools helps provide that for us, and we'll help provide that into the future as well. Really excited about our new partnership with the Northfield Community College Collaborative and Riverland Community College. We've just announced that in the past month. And we're going to bring the law enforcement program, which is housed within Riverland here in Northfield. And within that Northfield Community College Collaborative is going to give an opportunity to expand that program from a two-year program to three to help those that are working, that are parents, and that really have, would have difficulty coming into law enforcement. And it would mean they would have to move to another community to be able to do that. That means they can stay in our community and still work, work towards that degree to become local officers. Next slide, please. So in summary, the police department, it feels very fortunate, I would say, to be partners in this community. Partners working together in some of the same programs and with some of the same community partners that you work with, the STRIVE program, Northfield Promise, Growing Up Healthy, HCI, the Northfield Community College Collaborative, which I just mentioned, Northfield ASAP, Brett sits on that, I'm to help direct it. And we really share some of those same goals. How do we provide a safe experience for our students to grow and become the best that they can be? Again, thank you for your partnership. We appreciate it. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have those, and I'd be more than happy to come back at any time.
Excellent. Thank you for the wonderful presentation. Board members, questions, comments for either Chief Elliott or Officer Weiss? Amy?
Thank you both for coming here. It's really good to hear from you, and I had lots of thoughts while you were talking, so I have several questions. And I'm a big thanks because I really think having you as part of our school's community helps, helps all the kids. I know lots of kids who've gone through the DARE program, and that made an impact. And my, the cat, the crash, the mock crash is huge. My daughter was class of 2018, and she talked about the year she got to see it. And it was very impactful to her because it was her friends that were dying, you know, in the mock crash. And coming from my high school, I actually had a crash happen, and a freshman died back in the day. So that's nice that you provide that, and it is really, the kids do, the kids do learn from that, even though it's very a hard way to learn, but it's a good way to learn. I would be interested at some point, I hope you come back again sometime, Matt, will you invite them sometime again? I would love to have some crime statistics from the schools or incident statistics, whatever that would be, just to see what you're dealing with. And I don't know if you quantify any of this, and then if you have any any way, like if, how you're working with to minimize incidents and, and how, how that works, what your goals are within the school, just to have some idea of what you're facing and what your strategies are working with the schools. I'd be very interested in having another, you know, in a year or so from now, hearing more of that type of information. I have a next-door neighbor who wants to be a future officer and has actually college degree, and he's been waiting for two years to go to the place up in Alexandria. But he, and he's been accepted, but it keeps getting postponed on him because of COVID and stuff. So I want to connect you guys up with that. I think he'd be great. And then I also, my question for Bart is this. I see you're fully equipped with your weapons. I'm wondering, are the students interested in your weapons? Are they curious about them? Are they intimidated by the weapons? How do they react to seeing you walking through the school fully decked out?
I think they're okay with it. I do get a lot of questions. We've gone back and forth about the uniform or a polo shirt with just more minimum. I am under the thought process of, I'm a police officer. If I enter a room, I want people to know I'm a police officer. I don't have to introduce myself. As far as weapons, I haven't heard any concerns myself. But, you know, I have to be careful if I'm in crowds, especially when I'm in elementary school, because they do start crowding around me. But no, I haven't heard anything directly.
And they don't ask to see your gun or something like that, or?
You know, they asked me about what's on my belt. So I try to go through my belts, and I try not to focus on the firearm. I try to focus on other things on my, on my belt. Now, when I do direct the firearm, I just go, yes, the firearm, and I go, I move on to the next one. But it's, it will be the last thing I talk about. So we talk about handcuffs, keys, flashlights. The spray I have.
Okay, I was just curious how they would react, because you do have a presence, which is what you want, and, and whether that, it sounds like it, they're just fine with it. Then the other question I had was, can students contact you directly somehow? When not, when you're not at school? I was a little confused by the presentation. Are they calling you up in the middle of the night and saying, I'm getting a threat on social media? Or how does that work?
They don't call me directly, but as far as a student, I had a former student that on my way here, I had a message pop up on my email. It was a former student that wants to contact me as soon as I, as soon as I'm back on duty. So do a lot of them contact me directly. They can, but it's through an email chain. It's through my voicemail at work. They don't have my actual work cellphone.
Again, thank you very much.
Other questions, comments? Jeff?
Thanks, you guys for coming in. Appreciate your service. I'm grateful for it. Just wanted to say what, you know, a lot of it, I think it's, it's, it's great to have that presence around of, of just security. And for you, you know, you've known the schools well, just reaction time. I mean, to be in, in the right place at the right time, but even just, it's, it's about, if something happens, how quick can you react? So I think that, that, I mean, it's very commonplace in other school districts, bigger school districts, they have an officer, you know, on, on campus around. So at least then I'm grateful that we have that. As far as bigger events and things like that, how do we, if there's something and you need more help to kind of police different things going on, you just, can you talk a little bit about that if there's an event going on that you might want to add some people?
Yeah, we work with administrators at the building or the athletic director to talk about what events are going on and what the capacity is, if there's any known threats, if there are any concerns or anything like that, and then we'll adjust accordingly. Is it something one officer can have, or we need some more? We do have a reserve program here at the Northfield Police Department, and we have reserve officers. And you often see them at like hockey games and football games and things like that. We know we're going to have a bigger crowd to help with some parking and congestion issues, but also for having some eyes in the crowd or in the building and be available as well too.
Thank you. That whole eyes and ears thing is very important. So thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Other questions, comments? Noel?
Thank you for your report and for being, doing what you do. I had a call from a parent who had moved into the district. It was some years ago. He said, are the schools in Northfield so dangerous that we need police officers in the hallways? And I was able to turn that around and say, you know, you know, it really is an opportunity that students can see the role of a police officer in a very positive way. And she thanked me, and I said, you know, call me in six months after you've talked with your child and, and see what the response is. And she did, and it was very positive. So thank you.
Glad to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Questions? Oh, Claudia?
Hi, Bart, I'm wondering if you could share what training you have gone through in the last couple of years that has you found especially useful in the school? And then also any experiences that you had at school that you took back to the department?
So there's a school School Resource Officer Board. And we actually, our city actually hosted that, and we had other, basically, school resource officers have a different, we deal with more juveniles than we deal with adults. So we, we learn more about five oh fours, about what the administration does as far as that level, if we can step in, if we can't step in. Privacy laws. So there's a lot more privacy laws with juvenile. We work with social services, just some of those trainings that other officers won't get. I'll, I have had. And annually, we do the implicit bias trainings, just like the one- I'll, I have had. And annually, we do the implicit bias trainings, just like the one Chief Mark Elliott was going over. But and then there's a training the school puts on before, before they start with all the staff. They invite me to, to, to arrive there and I'll sit in with that date training. I think your training is a couple of days. But there's one that they want me to be a part of so they can be, they're implicit bias training and everything. That's what, so I share trainings with the school and with the department.
Cory?
Thanks for being here, Chief Elliott and Officer Bart. Question about tip four one, four one one. Kind of curious how often that's used by students to report social host ordinances, parties. I'm really close, aren't I? Fights, anything like that? How often does it use among students?
So Bart follows up on most of the school ones on those. And a lot of times with those, depending on, on I guess immediacy of what's reported, if it's immediate, it'll go to the patrol guys. If it's something that is not an immediate threat, maybe something that's coming up tomorrow or the next day, dispatch a lot of times routes goes directly to Bart and so that he can follow up on those. But he's also been known to get called at nine at night to help with the tip four one one call. And, you know, it, it really varies. We might have a week or two where he gets a couple of weeks, but then we might go four or five weeks without a tip at all. Hard to say? Can I get the tips? I have it set up to where if there's a tip that comes in that's school related, dispatch will just call me directly. But also those tips go straight to my cellphone. I, I have it on. They're not hiding anywhere, but I get all the tips. So if there's a tip anywhere in four one one, I'm at a level where I'll even hear about verbal. I skip those, but I have to read them all. Yeah, if there's anything that's directly going on at school at the time. So I have, I gotten a tip that there's someone vaping in the bathroom right now? Yes. And they'll call me right, right away.
Do you find that most of them are legitimate concerns and not just kids goofing on you?
I feel when they're at the four one one tip level, then they are, that they're legitimate.
Thank you.
So my dad was actually a police chief in my hometown. So I have two questions. Bart, where do you spend most of your time? Is it in the high school or do you get around to all the schools?
I get around to all the school, but I spend most of my time at the high school. I have, I share an office at the high school. And I deal with a lot of walk-ins. And if there's immediacy somewhere else, then I'll get called directly on my cellphone, whether it's the administrator themselves from that school or their staff members.
All right. And the, the second question is, you talk about all the, the great relationships you have. Are there students that either fear you because of something in their life? Or that have negative reactions? And if so, how do you handle that?
With my words. You're right. There has students that have negative reactions about police. And we've talked about it and they've shared their concern with me on an encounter they had with the police officer. I try to show them my side. I try to listen to their encounter of how they had it with when they were dealing with what they had to see or do or know, or they know someone else. And I'll just sit there and listen. I'll give some advice, feedback, and I want them to get to know who I am, get them to know our community, our officer.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions. So I really appreciate the presentation and you touched on so many areas. One thing that was really interesting is the community task force that you put together. And I really appreciate the broad stakeholders of the community that you pulled together. And again, really, really strong people that did that work. And I appreciate you recognizing that the community does need more information. And so it'll be interesting to see how, you know, that's a goal of yours and how you will roll that out. I think we didn't, we were remiss in not formally welcome you to Northfield. I know you've been here for a while, but you know, Chief, Chief Monte Nelson, how long? I swept kind of lost track. How long have you been in Northfield?
A little over two years now.
Okay.
And Chief, since last August.
Since last August. Yes, I knew that would, that appointment was more recent. So welcome formally from the boards, since we haven't had this opportunity. One thing that you talked about, which I think is really important, is the training that your officers do. And, and, you know, we, we recognize that in terms of training our professionals. And one sort of challenge to that, of course, is the budget and how that can, can work to support that training or be a deterrent to the, to the training. So as you look at your training and you did a nice job of detailing what you do, what, where are the strengths that you see exist in your training? And where do you feel there's opportunity that you'd like to, to see moving forward with additional training for, for really your staff?
Well, as you mentioned, the, the budget is probably the most significant. Most significant challenge that we have, as well as keeping officers on the street. We're a department of 24 from top to bottom. And when we send officers to training, it means they're not working their shift. So we have to have enough officers to cover our, you know, our patrol needs as well as sending them to training. So that becomes a problem as well. So staffing levels are, are an issue with training and being able to provide that. And then the training itself and having good training available locally. We have to send an officer more than, you know, an hour or two away, it becomes hard to fit that into a full training day and travel time and everything like that. So we try to do as much as we can online. I guess the one thing that came out of the pandemic is some more technology to assist in some of that. And we're taking advantage of that whenever we can.
Excellent. Thank you. Dr. Homan?
Turn my microphone on. You know, I think that what I just want to share with the board is our work with Officer Bart is far beyond what I think the average person thinks. In fact, I would say that Bart is probably one of my more frequent contacts with the city. So not just about policing issues, right? But about, about other kinds of things happening in the community, a traffic issue, other kinds of things where we need information. Bart serves as a conduit for that. And so I think that that's been something that's been very valuable for us to be able to have that connection. And I do want to just reiterate the level of seriousness that the police department does take. If we, I want to be really clear. It isn't like we have threats coming out of our ears, right? But when they come, when they are there, it does require, first of all, a sense of seriousness. But also getting to the bottom of it quickly to determine, is it something that's a viable threat or not? And the response that we have had when needed has been excellent. So if we have had to call and say, you know, we have read this or we have heard this, or a parent has shared with us. You know, we want to be able to make sure that we're able to help respond in a fairly quick way. And so whether it be tip four one one, we've had some things come through that, or whether it be something that a parent or another student has brought to us. When we call Bart, he, it doesn't matter what day or Saturday mornings I've called Bart, we got this question, what do you know about it? And that ability for us to share information as appropriate back and forth, you know, has been something that's been very helpful because it has allowed us to make some of the decisions that we have to make about keeping students in school and other kinds of cancellations with the best information that we can. So that's something that I've always been really proud of that relationship that we have had between the department. It goes back to Chief Nelson, prior to Chief Elliott and the relationship that we've had to be able to keep that information flowing between the schools and the, and the city, really, not just policing issues, but other kind road closures, you know, do the buses need to take a different route? Is there something blocking? You name it. We've talked on snow mornings from time to time about what are the officers seeing, you know, in town to make those kinds of decisions? So I just want to share the more, the fullness of the relationship that we have. There are things that we see that happen, you know, during the school day, but it is about, you know, quite a bit more than that. And frankly, a lot of times just, yep, it's going to be okay. Here's what we know. And we're able to make decisions with the best information because we have the ability to call each other and to be able to share some of that information. So I really appreciate that part of the relationship that we've had with the PD. So thank you for coming tonight. We really appreciate the presentation and the partnership.
Yes, thank you. We, we do appreciate it. And I, I appreciate Dr. Homan articulating that, the partnership, because that came through loud and clear in your presentation. And was also really heartening is the passion you have for your work. And we appreciate the partnership and we know that, you know, you work so, so well with our administrators and our staff and Dr. Homan. And we just, we really appreciate the work that you do. And, and as I say about teachers, your profession, it's not a profession, it's really a calling. And so we, we are grateful for your work. So thank you. And we look forward to these annual reports. This is great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next item for discussion, we have Val Murdisdorf, our Director of Finance, who will present the Benjamin Bus Transportation Contract. And just as a reminder to board members, there was a revised contract in the table file. Welcome, Val.
Thank you. Good evening. So I'm just going to give a quick summary of the transportation process that we went through. We had a four-year contract with Benjamin Bus. That is the max we're allowed to do by state law. So we typically have done a two-year contract with the option to extend two more years. This is the first year, we published it in the paper requesting quotations. This was the first year that we actually got an additional quote. So that was kind of surprising. We obviously had a longstanding relationship with Benjamin Bus. The other quote we received was only for type three, which is specific to special ed for the most part. And Benjamin Bus actually had the lowest rate for that, as well as the only rates for the other items that we need transportation for. So my recommendation is to, to go with Benjamin Bus. Pretty much all of the same contract things that we've had in the past, all of the same types of transportation, types of rates and those things. It's a four percent increase for, for this coming school year and then a three percent increase in the year after that. I will say there were some intentional reasons for the four percent. Benjamin Buses have some concerns about the current rate of inflation, fuel prices. And just they, they did not provide any increases in wages over the last year and a half. So they want to make sure that they're able to provide that for their staff. And as we are aware and have talked about, just finding staff in general has been a challenge. And so they want to make sure that they're able to be competitive and staff what we actually need. To partner that, I requested that we go from 24 routes to 23. So you might remember probably three years ago. We came to the board saying we had lots of extra students riding and we actually added a bus route. We are now obviously seeing that go the other direction. And so we can reduce that. They were, they thought that was absolutely fine to do. And they're actually looking to see if we can get it down to 22, which would be an additional savings from what I included in the document in your board packet. But so then the net for just the regular to from transportation will actually be a net decrease in combination with the one less route, which is about a $75,000 decrease. We'll have one less student contact day with the calendar and that's about another $10,000. So overall, that will be a net decrease for the budget, which I think is a great, a great place to be. It gives Benjamin Bus what, what they need, but also helps us manage our expenses as well. And then the three percent in the next year, the final two years of the contract, we are allowed to negotiate that at the time which we indicate we would like to extend the contract. And I, I recommended to John that we just wait. And we have typically done that upfront. I said, a lot can happen in a year as we are super aware now how fast things can change in 12 or 15 months. So instead of locking both of our organizations and we decided to wait and make sure we know where we're at with everything and do that down the road if we choose to extend it. The only other major change, and I can't even really call it major because we don't have a ton of other cancellations, but we did change that language. Sorry, knock on wood. We had, the previous contract included just a straight $500 credit. They obviously do save some money if they don't run bus routes for the day. So it was an acknowledgement, acknowledgement of that. We've changed that to just 10% of the daily contract rate. So then that will escalate for us as the rate increases. So you can see in the narrative, it's just shy of $1,000 instead of 500. The revised copy in your table file included the fuel clause that was not in the original draft of the contract. It was included in the quote. So everything was agreed to and submitted with the $2.75 fuel clause. It just was missed in the actual contract. So that's what the revision was. Otherwise, everything else was the same. So if you have any questions about anything, I will gladly answer them. This will be asked for approval at the August 9 meeting. The contract is technically effective August 1. And I did verify with John that he's comfortable waiting till the ninth. Apparently in the past, they've gone two years without an updated contract. So he was not very concerned about it. So that was, I was like, not on my watch. Nine days will be your max. But but yeah, so he had no concerns about that as well. So I will take any questions.
Thanks, Val. Amy?
Thanks, Val. My question is, if you compare this new contract to their last contract that we had with them, are there any substantive changes that we should know about?
Nope. Not other than just the, the rate. Everything else is pretty much exactly as, as we've operated historically. The contract looks different. We used a consultant four years ago. I was new to the transportation liaison role and kind of just getting my feet wet and understanding. And so we used a consultant for that process. And I didn't love the way I felt like the contract was overly complicated. And so I simplified the contract, reviewed a couple of other districts, pulled all the pieces that were applicable for our district. And tried to simplify it, but everything will operate basically the same as it had.
I noticed it was really readable. So thank you for that.
That was the goal.
Thanks, Amy. Other questions, comments? Tom?
For the number of buses, what data did they use to determine how many students they would have? Is it from like the cards that the parents mail in? So they have actual data? Because if they went by last year or even, I don't know, maybe, or do they take an average or whatever? Do they actually know the numbers?
So they, they do have actual ridership data that they track in their system that they use. Last year was exceptional because of the spacing and all of those pieces. We have, we also have an annual transportation report. So there's a tracking mechanism in Skyward that tracks students as well. And that number has been declining. So they felt very confident that going from 24 to 23 wouldn't be an issue. That going from 23 to 22, they wanted to wait until the first couple of weeks of school. Because even with the bus cards and all of those things, there's always kind of all the people that didn't know they should fill it out or filled it out and then something else changed in their schedule. So until we kind of get a regular regular average of who's riding and when, they can't really make that assessment. But they do have all of that data.
Thank you.
Other questions? Jeff?
I know with fuel costs going up, I'm sure there's some kind of parameter in there on a scale of how fuel costs would work as far as an increase. And then also too, I know employees and people are hard to get for, for hiring. So however, we could help incent that, whatever format would come in financially, a promotion or whatever, just some comments on that.
Yeah. So the, the fuel clause that we have is basically $2.75 less whatever the fuel excise tax calculation is for them. The district pays anything that's over and above that based on whatever their current price. The contract lays out that they would have to substantiate the dollar amount that they're charging us and all of those things. But 275 and the excess calculation, I want to say averages like 46 cents. I haven't looked at it too recently, but that's to take that with a grain of salt, but that's roughly what it is. So the district then pays the difference on the actual fuel that they used for transportation that month. That was anything over that range. So that's how that piece works. And then as far as employment, we do have a link to their website on our employment page that says, hey, we're looking for bus drivers. Click here to apply and it takes them to Benjamin Bus's website. So that they can do that. Outside of that, so that they can do that. Outside of that, I'm not sure if we included in parent updates or anything like that. But, so those are some other, other ways that we can go about it. I know they have lots of signs around town hanging on big buses, but...
I know that's, that's a big issue and maybe you should have more job spares around town or something to encourage people to apply.
Yeah, we usually also allow them to park a bus, you know, at some strategic locations with the big sign on the side, you know, "Come work for Benjamin Bus." And so, and I think that we're seeing that in a number of similar positions within the district as well as Benjamin Bus. I know we have 20-plus educational assistance openings and they're similar in a lot of different ways. So we are concerned about that for, along with our bus drivers as well.
Yep. And we have done kind of some partnering. We have several child nutrition, part-time child nutrition staff who also drive buses. So we try and partner schedules to provide more of a full-time position for staff between the two organizations, if that works for their schedule too.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Val, for working through the contract. It looks good. How often then, when we have that fuel, that agreed upon field charge, you know, is there an average amount that we pay over and above that historically?
Um, I don't have that off the top of my head. I can go back and analyze that. We track all of the bills monthly, so I could go back and do that and provide that data for you.
I was just curious, is it, is it a substantial amount?
I don't even know if I could guess.
Okay.
I haven't, I didn't look at that recently because we gather it for the annual transportation report, which is due in August, so I haven't done that yet. But when I pull that together, I can share that with the board.
Curious. Thank you. Again, thanks for your work and we do appreciate the partnership that Benjamin Bus, we have developed with them. And I know as the transportation liaison, you're in the weeds every day on some of that stuff, particularly as the school year, school year rolls out. And then in terms of the route, that is, it's a route that we're discontinuing at the middle school. How will parents be alerted of that? Because it will be in effect for this school year.
Yes. So one of the things that we have had historically is 246 has been our division street by the high school, middle school in Bridgewater has been declared a hazardous crossing. So for families who lived right across the street in those neighborhoods would technically be considered in the walk boundary, but they would have to cross. So we've been transporting those families from across the street, basically. So they were safely able to get across 246. And now with the roundabout and the tunnels and the actual crosswalk that they put down by the middle school and by the high school, we feel that that's, they have safe options for that now. So we are going to discontinue that. I don't think it's a huge impact. I am getting a list from Benjamin Bus of the families that were currently being transported. And we will notify them individually so that they're aware. And then probably send some kind of notification from probably Sibley and the middle school and high school. Spring Creek, thank you. That'll take a while.
We're working on it.
Yep. And so that way, those families are aware of it too, just as a neighborhood kind of piece as well.
Yes, excellent. As I recall, that, I mean, that was the plan all along is we were going to add those additional safety measures. And that was before the roundabout was, you know, that construction was secured. So that was the plan all along. In fact, I think we delayed it by a year even. So, so I think that the communication to parents and I think the options for students are there. So that's a good decision.
And we'll communicate multiple times. I mean, we're getting the list. As Val said, we don't think it's a large group of people. So we will, if possible, we'll try to connect with them personally. It's going to depend on how many people are on the list.
Excellent. Thank you, Val.
Thank you.
Okay, our next presentation is legislative wrap-up. Dr. Hillman, you provided a very nice recap for us.
Well, it wasn't, it was from the Schools for Equity and Education, as I said at the top. I didn't write it. We copied and pasted it.
Highlights and lowlights.
Well, that's from the C. That we caught, we took it. The Schools for Equity emails don't print quite perfectly for you, so we copied and pasted it for it. So we give credit to Deb Griffiths, as always, right? Because she's outstanding. And I'd invite, you know, Claudia and Corey and Julie, of course, you to weigh in as well on the legislative update. I think at the end of the day, what I would say is that we did see one of the more significant investments in the basic formula that we've seen in many years. And we also had very limited policy change. Are there some policy changes? Yes, in fact, in the packet, I included for you the 50-page summary from MSBA, which really gets very detailed. But if we use the Schools for Equity and Education highlights and lowlights, again, the basic formula is something that you know that we are very serious about looking at. 2.45% increase in the first year of the biennium, 2% in the second year. This is good. It's above what we had projected. But I, and I'm very grateful and I want to thank the legislature for coming together on this. We have the only divided legislature in the nation. We are the only state that has a House of one party and the Senate of the other. And so the compromises that did come were significant, right? The House gave up things that were very important to them. The Senate gave up things that were very important to them. We came to a resolution that I think is frankly about as good as we can get on the base increase that we could have really predicted or thought of. So I'm really proud of the fact that there was compromise and that we did get some good investment on the basic formula. And at the same time, I do want to just caution, I want to throw, there's a lot of discussion about the historic investment. And while that certainly may be true when we take a look at the basic formula increase over the last 15 years, I just think we have to say yes, and we still didn't get enough to match inflation. Inflation through the first five months of 2021 is 2.98% using the CPI. And so even the, one of the better increases that we've gotten in a decade and a half doesn't match inflation. So while, when we look at the number, yep, is it larger than what it's been in quite a long time? Yes, but we still haven't gotten inflation, so we're still trying to play catch-up. So I just want to caution, again, we go back to that we're grateful for it. We're very grateful, but at the same time, we also just want to bring some reality about the long-term sustainability of the basic formula. I'm also grateful that the legislature did see value in continuing to put money toward the special education cross-subsidy and the EL cross-subsidy. But we have to go beyond that initial statement because there was a $10 million investment to reduce the cross-subsidy statewide. And I think many people, if not all at this table, know that Northfield Public Schools alone has a $50, $5 million cross-subsidy. And when I looked at the state report the other day, I believe we're going to get $50,000 from that $10 million for our cross-subsidy. I'm thrilled that they are starting to recognize that there is an English Learners cross-subsidy in the state. We get some funding for English learners through the compensatory formula, but we routinely easily eclipse that probably two or three times as much now, I'm fairly certain. And so $4 million statewide is not, it's a drop in the bucket. But again, it's a recognition that it's there, so that foot in the door for these kinds of discussions we think are really important. So those things are all positive in terms of moving us forward. Again, not a ton of mandates, which we thought was a good thing. Our request was, please let us get our feet back on the ground after the pandemic and then we will certainly work with folks on policy issues as we move forward. I also, as we know, a couple of other things that I just, that were not included in the final bill that are of interest to our board and community. Number one was that we did not see any equalization in the tax bill. So you know that Schools for Equity and Education really focuses on equalization. So having the state pay a larger proportion of local property taxes so that we don't have this wild disparity in what school districts can provide for their communities because of the different tax bases. There was some equalization money in the tax bill, but it did not make it to the final round. So we will continue to work on that, you know, that that's been a passion of our district for years because we just don't have the same tax base as other school systems. So it costs our taxpayers more for bonds and operating levies than it might in a district with a higher amount of property wealth. And then unfortunately, the, the organization that Northfield promised as part of was not funded as part of the final agreement. And just so you know what that, that's an impact of $250,000 a year of what Northfield promised is able to do for the community. So again, something that it's, many people are a little confused because it was in both bills and both chambers. But we know when you get down to the end of it and they're negotiating those final pieces, there were a number of things that a lot of people wanted that didn't make it into the session or into the final bill. And so those are some things that are disappointing. But we come back that we did get some, some, I'm going to use the word decent increase on the formula. And I'm very grateful that we were listened to about the need for the formula because it is the most flexible piece of funding that we can get. I want to, we did have our first Legislative Action Committee this year. And so I want to thank Claudia and Julie and Corey for their work. We did have a spreadsheet of all the contacts that we made and we made quite a few contacts. We divided up the work. We looked at specific bills. We targeted our local representatives and other specific representatives that we felt we could try to help make sure we shared our story with. We kept track of it. We think it was a good start. And as I have said before, the Legislative Action Committee is not waiting till next January now to get started. We'll be actually starting in late July or early August to begin talking about next year's session because we know that the caucuses really start to develop what their priorities are for next legislative session pretty early. And so if we want to have an influence on how those are decided within those caucuses, trying to make sure that we're getting to our representatives now, we think is really important. Not just for Northfield, but I think for the rest of the organizations that we work with. So we take a breath because they went a little bit longer than what they were supposed to and we have to get right back up and we have to start looking at what are the things that we would like to continue to advocate for in the second year of the biennium, which of course is not typically seen as a funding year. So that's my brief update on the legislative cycle. And we'd open it to Corey and to Claudia and to Julie for any additional comments you might have.
Corey, Claudia, any additional comments?
I wanted to say that this decent increase and the, and the, you know, other bills that passed and the gains that public school had, just recognizing again that that was the effort of MSBA and schools and superintendents, like yourself, Matt, and parents and community members calling in and, and, you know, letting our local legislators know how important our public schools are. So we wouldn't have gotten such gains if, you know, people didn't keep calling and being present, especially, you know, MSBA being present there daily. So just grateful for those organizations and grateful for our community members that called and rode and drove up there when they could. And thank you for your work, Matt.
Oh, it's fun.
Yes, it is. We are, we are grateful for, for what the legislators were able to give us, of course. And the districts too, you know, Claudia alluded, the districts statewide really coalesced around, put, put money on, money on the funding formula and 2% and 2%. That was really our mantra towards the end of the session. Couple interesting things, of course, lowlights, I guess they're being categorized as. Val, we talked a number of times about declining enrollment and compensatory revenue. And that, that was also a competing priority that didn't quite make it through the finish line. So, so that was an issue. The other thing that was interesting, and I know that, you know, administrators and, and are still kind of working through the actual bills for, for the nuance and some of the requirements. But I thought it was interesting that they allowed for hiring retention, hiring and bonuses and/or retention bonuses for shortage areas. And we highlighted, you know, we always highlight special education. And I wonder if you see that, how districts might respond to that, to that opportunity?
Yes, I think the key thing is unpacking those parts. I am, there, there are, if we separate out and get away from the, the money part, right? And we go to the limited amount of policy. I think there were some significant wins in, I'm not, I've told many of you, I'm not a huge fan of one-time grant funding. Because, you know, you get something started, you get excited about it. And then when the grant funding goes away, we have to figure out what do we not do within the district to keep that program going? But I am a big fan of what they did around the one-time money this time to try to diversify our educational workforce. And that includes some of the, so the, the signing bonus and some of those things, we're still unpacking what that means. There's, once that passes, then we have to learn what is allowed and what is not allowed and how we're going to have to code it and things like that. So some of the things you're talking about are some incentives for people to come from out of state into Minnesota for some of those specific shortage areas. And so it's really about trying to recruit people from other states where they may have a larger number of teachers in a particular area. So those one-time grants are things that we think are, they're timely. They understand what we're facing in the educational workforce, both in shortage areas and making sure that our, our staff reflects the diversity that we're seeing in the state. So these are good things. We're really excited to see how they take off. And we will find what are the best evidence-based practices to do that. So the details start to get ready to come from the department about what can you do and what can't you do? How you code it? What situations are you allowed to use those things? We've already had some discussions with HCI, for example, on the Grow Your Own Teacher Program. That's something that we've done kind of in an ad hoc way locally here. And we are interested in continuing that program to be able to try to get local Northfield students to be able to go on and get their teaching license or work in other educational fields and be able to come back here. So there's a number of those things that are exciting. But as we always know, the, the truth and what we need to do in the details, sometimes you're pleasantly surprised at what you can do. And other times it's very narrow and we may not, in some cases, we may not qualify for some of that funding.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I, I do want to thank Dr. Hillman. You really are an incredible communicator with our legislators. I know Senator Dreheim has said to me, you know, I, when I want information, I email all the superintendents in my district and Dr. Hillman is the one who always gets back to me. And there are some that I never hear from. And that communication is key. And Claudia, you really touched on that. And I so enjoyed working with Claudia and Dr. Hillman and Corey. And we had our Monday noon calls and it really kind of, it was, it was a really good buddy system and the check-in and, and I think it made a difference. And it was really a pleasure to launch the Legislative Action Committee and the work we'll do this summer and ongoing, I'm really excited about. So thank you for, for your efforts. Okay, so we will move on now to the next, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't ask board members if they had any questions. I apologize. Before I move on, if anyone, Noel?
Thank you for the report, Dr. Hillman. And thank you for the board members who associate, who get together and form an association to find out what's going on. It's clear that, it's clear that those who show up, get the information and get some of the funding. So thank you. Thank you, Corey. Thank you, Julie.
Thanks, Noel. Any other questions or comments on the legislative session? Okay, all right. Thank you. All right. So we will move on now to the summary of the superintendent's, superintendent's performance appraisal. This is one of the things I most enjoy doing. This was Dr. Hillman's fifth performance appraisal, so it's been an amazing five years, right? So I'm just going to walk through, this is the summary of the appraisal that all board members did. So for this review period, which was the school year of 7/120 through 6/3021, all of seven board members completed the annual performance. It, the evaluation is, is quite in-depth and it covers all facets of Dr. Hillman's job responsibilities. Board members provide numeric ratings on a scale of one to five, one being low and five being high. For 44 job responsibilities organized around eight major topics. In addition to the numeric ratings, board members provide additional comments. So as board chair, I compiled and summarized board members' evaluations. And for the numeric ratings, means were calculated. And all written comments were shared verbatim with Dr. Hillman, but were not attributed to a specific board member. And I met one-on-one with Dr. Hillman on July 7th to review, to review the appraisal. And I'm really delighted to share that, to no one's surprise, Dr. Hillman received an outstanding appraisal and achieved an overall rating of 4.98 on a five-point scale. So that, that was really... So that, that was really a rating that was very well deserved and board members really talked about the reasons that they supported their ratings with a number of narrative comments. And collectively, we cited his work around three key areas. First and foremost, to no one's surprise, obviously the handling of the COVID-19 pandemic. So I'm going to read the summary of the board members' comments. So Dr. Hillman's handling of the pandemic was phenomenal. He worked tirelessly from the onset of this global health crisis to ensure the safety and wellbeing of our staff, students and their families. His cascading approach to communication provided regular, clear and concise communication that earned high marks in pulse surveys of district stakeholders. He ensured the district was transparent in its approach to the pandemic through regular reporting of the district's case numbers and explaining the why and the how the district would follow Minnesota Department of Ed's safe learning plan and guidance from the Minnesota Department of Health. His decisive leadership was a significant factor in the district's ability to quickly and effectively adapt to the ever-changing nature of the pandemic. With a total of 263 cases during the entire school year among students and staff, the district's safety protocols, protocols were clearly outstanding. One board member's comments best summarized Dr. Hillman's work in saying, "I was impressed, thankful and proud to have him lead our district during this historic time." Second, career, financial stewardship. The board recognized Dr. Hillman's exceptional management of the district's finances. Notable this year was the district's judicious use of pandemic-related funding from state and federal sources. In addition, Dr. Hillman relentlessly pursued other funding sources, including district counties and the city of Northfield to help offset pandemic-related expenses. His strategic decision-making, including the freezing of discretionary budgets at the onset of the pandemic, resulted in a significantly improved financial position, going from a projected deficit to a surplus. These actions were instrumental in helping the district to avoid further disruptions to our system and services to our families during this critical year. The board lauded Dr. Hillman's strength of leadership in formulating the framework to develop and adopt a new strategic plan that includes full engagement of district stakeholders in the process. Board members praised his long-term vision for the district, including his commitment to a sustainable five-year priority-based budget, beginning with the 22, 23 school year. And lastly, board members cited Dr. Hillman's work, district's equity work. In light of the urgent and competing priorities of the pandemic, it is especially notable that Dr. Hillman continued to prioritize the district's racial equity work. The anti-racism framework he developed is guiding long-lasting systemic, excuse me, systemic changes in the district. Board members expressed gratitude for his commitment to the core values embodied in the difficult but important work of ensuring an equitable, respectful, positive, supportive environment for all students. He effectively guided the board through the renaming of the buildings, the retirement of the mascot and the adoption of a land acknowledgement statement. All tangible actions that supported the district's work to address symbolism. In summary, Dr. Hillman is a kind, caring and compassionate leader, but also a very humble one. His leadership is what made this year truly phenomenal. While always quick to give credit to others, he rightfully deserves these accolades. This stellar annual performance appraisal is a reflection of not only his incredible work, but also his strength of leadership and the board's confidence in his ability to move the district forward. So thank you. Excellent. So thank you for a, really a truly phenomenal year and your incredible leadership. And I'll just ask board members if they have any comments they'd like to add. Okay, thank you. And thank you, the board members for completing the appraisal.
And I just, I do want to say thank you. I we do have an incredible team, you know, from our administrative staff, two of whom are here tonight, who I couldn't do the work without. You know, to every person in the district who takes our values seriously and tries to live them out every day. So it's my pleasure to get to drive this ship. It was a little rougher waters over the last year, but it was worth it nonetheless. And I could not be more proud to work for this board. It is a dream job for me. It continues to be that way and I look forward to serving you for many years to come. So thank you for your support.
Again, thank you. Okay, we will move on to our last item for discussion and report, which is superintendent report, Dr.
Yeah. So you're going to notice that we changed the title of this. This has been, had been our COVID-19 operations report for quite some time. And we're shifting it to be more just a, a regular update. And we're going to use a formula to develop the topics, but not be so tied to the formula that it's robotic, if that makes sense. But we are going to continue to keep a little bit of the COVID-19 update at the beginning of this. To begin with, we're going to typically give you kind of three topics at each meeting that I think are important for board members in the community to know. So the first one is the COVID-19 update. And what you all are aware of is that all state COVID-19 mitigations or mandates, they sunset with the expiration of the state's peacetime emergency. It was on July 1st. And we did update our, our summer COVID-19 protocols and that accompanied the report. Now, the key difference between the previous set of protocols and the protocols that went into effect just after July 1 was that there was a DHS, a Department of Human Services requirement that all licensed childcare centers continue to mask through June 30th. So even though most of the programs in the district were able to eliminate the masking requirement on the last day of school, our licensed childcare program needed to continue through that through June 30th. So we are now on the point where all masking is strongly recommended, but not required. And so really we have some fairly simple requirements that you can see around face coverings, physical distancing, cleaning and hygiene. We do have a couple of points where people, we still require them to wear a mask. If you're going to go into the nurse's office, you put a mask on. Because if you go to the dentist or you go to the, you know, your physician, they're asking you to do that same thing. And then if we did have a student who was on campus in one of our summer programs who was displaying some symptoms, but not enough where our nurse felt that they needed to send them home, they might look at having them wear a mask. They may also call the family and say, you know what? You can either come pick up your student or they can wear a mask for the rest of the day. And so I think so far people in those few situations are opting for a mask. I am happy to say through the first roughly, what month of summer programming, Erin, we have no reported cases. So this, remember, schools are a reflection of the community and we are seeing very low transmission right now within Rice County. The last reported number was like at five. And I noticed that they have now five per 10,000 residents, if you remember that per 10,000 resident number. And I've noticed that Rice County has actually taken that off of their website now in terms of reporting that weekly number per 10,000 residents. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware because again, I think that sometimes we hear things from a national level. I want you to know what are our protocols here in town. And then I also shared with you the vaccination pieces. And what I did is I did click on 16 and older. So you'll see within Rice County, we have 64% of people 16 and older who have at least one vaccine dose completed. If you go to 12 plus, we're down to around 61.7% of, this is as of last Thursday. We're working on one of our parent updates that will go out this week. And really just reemphasizing the importance, the safety of the vaccinations that are available. We emphasize that we respect that vaccination is a personal choice. But we have numerous outlets, numerous scientific organizations, the American Association of Pediatrics, who are saying that these are among the safest vaccines that we have. And that they think that they are really important to delivering that final knockout punch to COVID-19. So again, while we are not requiring vaccinations, you're going to hear that too. The school board does not have the ability, we don't have the authority to require vaccines of our students. That authority only comes from the state. And if you think about it, even when the state does grant us the authority, not just grant us, but tell us you're going to require these vaccinations. In Minnesota, they've also offered a conscientious, objective, a conscientious objection clause where a parent can sign and say, I'm not going to have my students. So we see that as the template, you know, for this moving forward. But we do know we have worked to go, especially in that 12 to 15-year age group. We're working on getting those numbers by zip code. We ask public health to give us that data by zip code. And if you just look at the straight-up numbers, we're a little concerned about the percentage of students there yet who might have that. Again, it's a personal choice. We understand, but we know that this is also our best tool to knock out this virus once and for all. And I think it's important when you start to hear some of the national discussion about the fall. So you're reading on Friday, they tend to come out with these things on Friday, which anyway, they come out with these things on Friday. And what the CDC said on Friday is that their recommendations are around that vaccinated staff and students do not need to mask. There's a lot of conjecture about what does that mean? But you have to remember that the CDC is also making recommendations for states like Minnesota who had hit their 70% mark right before July 4th. And then also places where the vaccination rate is under 40% in some cases. So we don't generally take the CDC recommendations and just adopt them. The Minnesota Department of Health takes the CDC recommendations and adapts them to Minnesota. And in Minnesota, we don't know what those recommendations are going to be yet, but what we do know is that Minnesota is in the top tier of the percentage of people vaccinated. And we do believe that that's going to be an important factor in how the Department of Health makes recommendations for the fall. So on COVID, you've got that update right there at this point. I'm also then very pleased to shift to our summer programming. And I am thrilled to tell you that summer programming is not just up and running. It is up and running in full swing. So I gave you a list of the programs that have already started, but I want to give you some numbers that I received today from Director of Community Education, Erin Bailey. And I think it's really important for us to take a look at the summer of 2021 numbers versus the summer of 2019 numbers. Last year, obviously it was a washout, right? We didn't have, we had some, but not nearly as many people as we normally have. So I did not get to include this in the table file for you, but I just want to share with you summer plus, that is what you would typically think of as elementary school summer programming, right? It's a combination of academic recovery and recreational kinds of opportunities. Summer of 2019, 253 students. Summer of 2021, 261 so far. So we're back to pre-pandemic level there. And more so. Summer blast, that's our middle school similar programming, but it's again, the combination of academic support and those kinds of enrichment opportunities. And what we can tell you is that we have 90 students signed up for this summer. 82 were scheduled in 2019 with an average daily attendance of 54. And that, so we really made some headway there. Bridges to kindergarten, a unique program that we have where we bring kindergarten students in for a couple of weeks so that they get the lay of the land. We did drastically change the requirements to participate in that program. Basically, if you're coming to kindergarten, you're eligible. And in summer of 2019, we had 76 students participate in that program. Are you ready? 140 this summer. So this is, what, what this is telling us is that parents really want to make sure that students have that ability to be in the building before it's, I consider to be the spring training. You know, I love baseball, right? So it's the spring training for kindergarten. Recognizing that last year's kindergarten experience was not the same for everyone, specifically for our Portage kindergarten students who may be coming back. This was an idea that I, I said to Erin one day, could we try this? And like that, we are doing it. And so we were having something called a jumpstart, the first grade program. So we started by offering it to all of the kids in Portage who were in kindergarten, Portage last year because they didn't get that same opportunity. We are not then expanding it beyond kids in that, depending on the number of staff members that we are able to be able to have. And so we are estimating that there's going to be between 30 and 36 students who take advantage of that program. Youth recreation is a hard number to give you because there's not the same number of offerings every year. So we try to find a piece of data that we can share and I'm thrilled to share with you that we are blowing the doors off 2019. So in 2019, summer of 2019, our revenue for youth recreation was $96,170. And this is the revenue from April to June, right? So we're not even talking about the rest of the summer yet. Are you ready? In summer of 2021, $126,000. So you can do the percentages in your head, but that's a pretty significant increase. Now, we tell you the things that are going well. And then we tell you about the things that we are concerned about. And we do have a little bit of concern right now about our school-aged childcare. So Kid Ventures, again, which typically serves kind of kids in like kindergarten through, well, through eighth grade through age 12. When the pandemic hit and people didn't have that, we think that people found some other things that for their kids. So in the summer of 2019, we had 235 students participating in our Kid Ventures summer childcare program. This summer, we have only 130. So while Early Ventures was back right away and all of our other programming is back, we are just are not seeing that return to that school-aged childcare programming. We think that people found some other things to do. And Erin, you're going to say something? Yes. So again, we give you the good news and then the not-so-good news, right? So I think that what this data is telling us is that people are ready to be back, right? That people want to be back. They want to keep these things rolling. They want their kids to be involved. And so this is really good news for community services. And again, we're keeping an eye on Kid Ventures. We're going to see what that does during the school year. Summer Ventures is a little different of a program than the school-aged childcare program during the school year, but we also knew that that was down a little bit too. But again, I wanted to share with you, we've heard a lot about how important summer programming is. We've been very intentional on how we designed ours. Our plus and blast have not started yet. They'll start I think in the next week or so. Yep, next Monday. So again, we're trying to create this as an on-ramp to the school year. Typically, summer school has seen this kind of this off-ramp from the previous school usually starts. We're intentionally starting those programs later to be an on-ramp to this school year again, because we think the upcoming school years where any recovery that needs to be done is really going to make the most headway. I also wanted to give you a brief update on Portage Online. The transition to the all-the-time online program is moving. When we published this document, we had 29 students enrolled in Portage Online. We're up to 32, I believe, as of today. We have had our first open enrolled students specifically to come here for Portage. Now, we are not marketing it outside of the district yet as more and more districts become online learning providers. We are just being very thoughtful about building the program and not necessarily doing direct marketing to people and other systems with other school systems. We are on the state-approved list. You see us, we've had inquiries through that. You will start hearing that there are some other districts who are being a little bit more forceful about recruiting people from other systems. And I think we're all going to learn about that as we go into the next few weeks about what is the right marketing strategy. We are going to staff this program. In fact, we meet tomorrow to talk about the staffing. We're going to staff it by the end of the week based upon the numbers that we have with a plan to scale it. One of the things that we think people are waiting for is what are the mitigation strategies for the fall? So whether you're a person who thinks students should mask still, or whether they're not, we think that there's a group of people there who are going to wait and then we're going to see some influx into Portage. But the good news is that we are prepared and we are officially authorized, which not every district is officially authorized to be able to offer these programs. And so we are in a very good position. The hard work that Hope Langston and the Portage team did to get us approved is going to be paying off. So we're very excited about how we're moving forward. And again, we did our first webinar last week. We, we did send a postcard to every homeschool family because we think that this does have an opportunity to partner with our homeschool families in a way that we have not been able to in the past. And so we did have six people who showed up to our webinar last week. We've got another webinar coming up and we'll continue to offer them through the summer, you know, for people to have an interest. So that is the report for this evening.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions or comments? Amy?
So I'm just curious about the online program and how many students you think we will end up with? And if you have 50 students over, you know, 13 grades, how does that work as far as staffing?
Yeah. So it's going to, number one, I do not know how many students will participate. Our, our initial plan was about how we could serve around 100 students, who I think will get there. I think it's going to be, I, I think it's going to be interesting to begin with. We are planning to be able to do some first-year subsidization of the program because we look at this as a long-term strategy, not just a reaction, right? There's a lot of flavors of the program that we think are going to be very good. There's a lot of flavors of the program that we think are going to be very good by way of example. Students participate in the high school program and the middle school program. They are able to come onto campus to take some hands-on courses. So. You can come and take CTE classes, career technical ed, industrial tech. You can take five classes online. You can come into school for up to two. So there are things that aren't ideal to be delivered online. We think that that's going to be an interesting component. I also think that there's societally, I think there's quite a few people who want to get back to what they deem is regular. Including some of the several hundred people who participated in our Portage program last year. I think some of us are talking that we're going to see people who want to come back in person. And then realize the level of flexibility that they had with the online program for them to be able to. Just have a greater flexibility in their schedule and their location, some things like that. So we are preparing for a year that will be a little bit, we think could be an initially smaller group. That rises through the year in terms of depending upon, I think, public health. But I also think about what people look at from that flexibility perspective. So I, we have committed to this. We are looking at potentially using some of our federal funding to support and subsidize, but. We have some people, we're not going to have more than one. We're not going to have more than 40 students with any one teacher. That's the required ratio. We are looking, of course, at adopting if we have to do some multi-grade at the elementary, that's something that we can do. We've got several creative ways that we could address that. And then our learning coach model, the secondary is really scalable as well. We're also building some of the supports in to existing positions. So by way of example. The counselor that will support Portage to begin with. Is also going to serve the area learning center. The area learning centers never had a guidance counselor before, right? And they have under 100 students. So with Daryl Keller, who is in charge of the Portage program, that's an example of how we can leverage that position in multiple ways. So we are prepared to be nimble. And we are also wanting to make sure that we are setting this up, not as a flash in the pan, right? But something that's a long-term tool that we have in our belt to serve the needs of the community and other communities as well. We don't, this district, there, there are school districts, this is somewhat like open enrollment. So there are some school districts who will send a bus to the downtown of the neighboring school district. We do not do that, right? We respect our neighbors. We are a net gain. On open enrollees from traditional public school districts, we have not had felt the need to do that. That creates contention. It creates animosity with our neighbors. And we are a overall school community. So I think there's some. There, we're really trying to be thoughtful and intentional about what would we do to recruit? People who are not part of this district. And so doing so in a way that lets people know that we're available with not necessarily doing hard sell. Come to Northfield right now. I'm not, we're not going to, we're not saying that we're not going to play that card at some point. We are not yet, and we're looking at how we can develop this here and then serve people. Here's the bottom line, you create a great program and in this community, it's word of mouth. People will come if they hear, we won't have to do a tremendous amount of marketing for people to know that this is a quality program. So we're just being very thoughtful about that right now because. We do have neighboring school districts and others throughout the state that we need to be good colleagues to. And so we are going to act with ethics and we're going to, we, we can certainly recruit people from other districts. We just aren't to the point where we think that that's the right thing for us to do yet.
I have a follow-up question. How will this interact with the ALC?
Yeah. So the program is separate from the area learning center. But our area learning center students for years having used an online component for credit recovery. The Odysseyware program that we used up through last year was something that was. Actually, the area learning center brought that to the district. That was an important thing that they brought. So to begin with, for sure, they are separate programs. They're actually separate schools. So we actually have a Northfield School District, Portage Online, Elementary, Middle School and High School. That gets all of the numbers and the same kinds of things that any physical school would get. So to begin with, those programs are clearly separate. I do see that over time, you're going to see some, some other pieces from the online program that. Look and feel more like area learning center kind of customized programming. That's what I'm talking about customized programming. But we are building it to begin with as simple as we possibly can so that we can gain steam. And then be able to make those kinds of individual personalized decisions as we move forward.
Thank you.
Other questions? Corey?
Yeah, I have a comment and a question. So concerning Kid Ventures. This is anecdotal, of course, but my organization I work for has been extremely flexible with childcare in the past 15 months. And ours are, we've been allowed to layer work in childcare like a lot of places. It's been extended through Labor Day. So I'm guessing that's where some of the gap you've been seeing, again anecdotal, but. From my friends who I've talked to, they've had similar experiences. So. I'm glad, you know that. So. Yeah. Sure. Right. Dr. Hillman concerned, Bridges to kindergarten. So year to year enrollment varies for obvious reasons. We saw a decline in enrollment last year for kindergarten. Do you have a sense for? What number of that increase? Cause I think it was like double, if I remember the numbers correctly. What number or percentage are those who didn't join us last year in kindergarten?
I don't, I don't think we have that. Do you have that data disaggregated yet? Yeah. And when, when these kids show up, we'll start to do that disaggregation. But I think this goes to show typically we limit it to about 25 students. But I think this is a good harbinger to see that parents do want their kids to have this experience. Cause remember this thing involves transportation, right? We drive, we, we pick the kids up on a school bus to bring. It's the full meal deal, you know, for this kind of kindergarten preparation work. And so I think we're learning there is a greater appetite for this that we might be able to continue that into the future.
Thank you.
And Tom?
How far away can the portage students come from? Sounds like someone from southwestern Minnesota be part of ours?
Any place in Minnesota. We are, we are, we are allowed to, we are, well, the truth is we're allowed, we would be allowed to serve any student. Anywhere. We only get the funding for the students in Minnesota, right? So we've limited it to students who are Minnesota residents. So you could live in Grand Portage, you could live in Slaton. You could live in, here's, you could live in Halleck, you could live in Preston, you can all, did I get all four corners of the state pretty good? That's right. Northwest angle as well. So we are allowed to serve anyone who is in the state of Minnesota. And again, we could serve people, we have the option to serve people who do not live in Minnesota, but. We don't get any of the funding for that. So that is not someplace that we're going to at this point.
Do the students have to show up at the school ever?
They do not under this program. Though I, I do want to point out that we are doing some, especially in our elementary program. One of the things that the teachers, all of our teachers in Portage last year were amazing. I mean, they built something that was from the ground up, right? And one of the more popular things that we saw with our elementary students was some intentional outdoor meetups, right? Now, not every family was comfortable, but many families were comfortable doing something outdoors. So a class might meet at a park for a kickball game or something like that. I don't know what activities they did, but that is a core part of our plan moving forward. So for the elementary students. Plan them, even if they are coming, we just talked with a family, the family who is open enrolling. And we shared that they're not too far away from Northfield. And I do think that at the end, that was something, oh, sure, we could drive to Northfield for that. That would be really cool. So it's not just specifically. You know, it is mostly online, right? But there are going to be some of these activities that we do to try to bring people together if they are comfortable in doing so.
Corey?
I had a follow-up question to Tom's question. At a prior board meeting, I think Amy asked about the requirement to be at the school at any point and it was a way to standardize testing, I believe. Has that been resolved? Do we know if students will have to come physically be here or is there an online component to that as well?
So what we understand right now is that the state of Minnesota requires you to come onto a campus to take the MCA test. Okay. Now, parents do also have the option to opt out of the MCA test. And so that, that potentially for someone who did not want to come to campus, that would be their option. Now, who knows? We will see, I, I'm really hopeful that we will see as the, you've seen numerous articles in Twin Cities. News outlets about the dramatic growth of school districts offering all the time online programs. And as that grows, I think that that's going to put pressure on the Department of Ed to be able to offer that. Online testing experience. Can it be done? Yes. When you are. The thing that you're looking at with a standardized assessment like that is making sure that you're eliminating as many of the variables as you possibly can. So that the results can be generalized, you know, in a way that are useful. I know that that's the psychometrician's concern mostly about it, that every student takes it in a, most students take it in a similar way. So the difference between you being at home, you know, versus a school where there's a proctor. You start to run into some questions about that. Now, there are some other assessments that do, in fact. The Northwest Evaluation Association, the MAP testing, they did allow students to take it in. So we're going to see, you know, what does that say nationally about, can you develop, can you administer those standardized tests in different formats?
Just to clarify, when you say a campus, if they're a portage student, you mean Northfield campus? So if they live in Halleck, they can't go to Halleck High School to take the test at that point.
So I would say that that is true, Corey. I'm going to double, we'll double check on that, but here's the reason I would say that that is true. Those students are, if, if you were living in Alexandria, for example, and attending the Northfield School District Portage Program, you're open enrolling into the program. So you are officially our student. And while I would hope for some, I would hope, but you can't ship the tests anywhere else, right? You can't ship a Northfield student's test to Alexandria. So there's the part about the chain of transmission, right? The, who has the tests at what time that I think would prevent that. Not saying it's common sense, I'm just saying that's what I think it is.
Other questions or comments? Jeff?
As we're kind of talking about, you know, ramping up for the new school year here, I just kind of had a quick question I wanted you to comment on. I mean, we're mid-July and as we ramp up into. Fall sports and fall activities, what can you comment on and how normal that will look? Or are we just full speed ahead or you know what I mean? Cause we're kind of.
Yeah, Jeff, I, I think everyone wants to be able to have a regular year, right? We want to be able to have a Friday night football game, you know, that people get maybe to have some pizza downtown and. Grab some popcorn and sit in the memorial field stands and, and just enjoy that wonderful rite of passage. And if we're looking at, what I am hearing is that. The protocols that we have for the summer. Which you've seen, I included pretty, pretty basic, right? Is it back to complete regular? You can't, I, I don't know when we'll be back to regular. I think regular is going to mean a lot of different things for a lot of different people. But if we're using what the protocols are right now, it would look much closer. In fact. It would feel very much like 2019. I think that's fair to say about how our summer programming is running. You will see people who choose to do mitigation strategies on their own, right? So we will continue running the live streams for people who want to enjoy, you know, some of those activities from home. Be able to choose to wear a mask if we're not required to do that, you know, that, that certainly you're going to see some of the, we want to respect folks' choices. We will wait to see what the guidance is. But what we are hearing is that we heard this, this was clear to begin with, they thought that this, as long as the progression of vaccination. And we continue to see low infection rates, which is what we are seeing. We are seeing incredibly low infection rates. And we do think that's because of the number of people who have been vaccinated in the state. I anticipate that you will probably see something that looks much more closely to 2019. Than to what you saw last year. I, I do anticipate, I do not see unless there is an outbreak. I see fans in the stands, right? I see it coming back this as. Regular as you possibly can be, but I have to give you the caveat, Jeff, that that's what I know of on July 12th. At 8:44 PM. And as we know, this can all change. But if we keep going like we are, if we keep on this same track. We are in a position to be back, you know, as closely to 2019 kinds of protocols as we, we could be. So people just need to keep, still keep doing their job. Don't stop washing your hands, right? That was good before the pandemic. It's good after the pandemic, right? It's good to stay home if you're sick. If you're not feeling well, stay home or if you've got a sniffle, don't hesitate to put a mask on for, to, to protect people around you. But those are the kinds of things that individuals will do. So we're very, right now, what we're seeing in all of the summer athletics. You are seeing regular kinds of things. It's, there, there aren't the, there aren't the restrictions, there aren't the, we are back to probably. As close as anything of what we were to 2019 as we have, we have been. And I, I don't see, I don't see that changing for the fall unless there's a dramatic change in public health. Or there's something, you know, an outbreak in a particular area.
Thank you. That's good to share.
Yes, Claudia?
Students, the elementary kids, they likely will not be wearing masks in the fall.
You know, I'm going to withhold judgment on that one quite yet, Claudia, because the, what? I think there are a couple of different things here. Number one, we know that those students can't be vaccinated yet. So we know that that's one consideration. We also know that the state is diving deeply into the data. There's a lot of data. Remember, all of the cases that we had in schools were reported to MDH. So really looking at what were the transmission rates amongst students under 12. Then looking at the ability for the hospitalization system to be able to handle. You know, that was another key concern of why we had so many mitigations. So I think that I, I don't have an answer for you yet on that. What I would say is that there were no, it was strongly recommended for summer programs and not required. So I think that that tells us, I think that that tips the state's hand as to where we're going. And even though 12 and under are not able to be vaccinated yet. We know that that is the group that did transmit the least, you know, when we look at the data. And we also know that the adults at school around those students. Are the, the rate of vaccination among our staff, my calculation, it's above 90%. So those are all factors that I think that will go into the recommendation that comes from the state. I don't, I am not convinced that you can see. A requirement from the state anymore unless there's some time of additional peacetime emergency that will be implemented.
I had another question. Do you know how easy it is to determine the home state for the Portage program? So we're talking about. Students should be from the state of Minnesota. Do you know how easy it is or what the process is to determine that you're from? And it's what I'm imagining, you know, people who are traveling or.
Yeah, I think the key thing there is that they would give us their address, right? And every student in Minnesota is assigned a Mars number. So whether if you're, the moment that you actually, when you actually do your preschool screening, that number is generated. And so if you live in Minnesota, you're going to have that Mars number will very easily be able, and there also could be students who have moved into the state, right? Who could then show that yes, they live within the state of Minnesota. So. I think it's a fairly straightforward process, though. There are circumstances, we might have to ask a few more questions. Good questions. Thank you.
Yes, excellent presentation and excellent questions. And with Erin here, we just have to thank you because like last summer. This summer, you are frontline for implementing, you know, some of the rollbacks of guidance and protocols. And you and your staff are doing outstanding job and we just appreciate you being that. The one who sees what, what could be coming and, and how it's all going to work. So thank you. Thank you very much. Great. Thank you. Okay. That is, takes care of our items for discussion and reports. So we'll move on now to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Tom. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have six items for individual action tonight, so we will move through those. Policy committee recommendations that were policy one oh two, four, four, one and seven, one, three that were presented at the June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one school board meeting as first reading. So the motion to approve, is there a motion to approve policies one oh two, four, four, one and seven, one, three as presented? Moved by Amy, is there a second? Second by Cory. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on.
If people have any questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did we have any questions or comments? I'm moving too quickly. Thank you, Dr. Hillman. Any questions or comments on those policies? Right, that was a bit after the fact. I apologize. So those policies are approved with unanimous approval. Our next item is the fiscal year twenty twenty-one audit engagement letter and the HIPPA Business Associate Agreement. So is there a motion to accept the twenty twenty-one engagement letter from Clifton Larson Allen in the amount of twenty-three thousand, seven hundred plus expenses and approval of the HIPAA Business Associate Agreement as presented? Moved by Tom. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is a co-curricular addition. I will ask for a motion to approve and then we have any questions or comments for Dr. Hillman. We could answer them at that time. So is there a motion to approve the robotics head coach advisor level H stipend up two thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Claudia. Are there any questions or comments about this motion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is a resolution that we do have to do every year, which is a designation of identified official with authority. This is a MDE requirement for reporting, et cetera. So our, need a motion to approve the resolution to authorize Dr. Matthew Hillman to act as the identified official with authority Iowa and Christine Nessett to act as Iowa to add and remove names only for Northfield Public School District number six fifty-nine. Moved by Amy, is there a second? Second by Noel. This is a resolution that will require a roll call vote, but are there any questions on this motion? Okay, there's no questions. Again, resolution, roll call, vote. Erin?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. The next resolution is one that we have done every year and that is regarding conducting school business on the federal Christopher Columbus Holiday, which does fall on a meeting for the Northfield Public School Board of Education for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So is there a motion to approve the resolution as presented regarding the ability for us to meet on Christopher Columbus Day, which this year is October eleventh, twenty twenty-one? Moved by Jeff, is there a second? Second by Tom. So we have a motion and a second that we are saying that Christopher Columbus Day on October eleventh, twenty twenty-one shall not be a holiday for purpose of the school board meeting. So again, this is a resolution and requires a roll call vote. Erin?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Our last item for individual action is set the date, times and location for school board meetings, which was in your packet. So is there a motion to approve the schedule for school board meetings, July twenty twenty-one through December twenty twenty-two? Moved by Tom. Sorry, is there a second? Second by Claudia. Are there any questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we do not have any items for information this evening. So our last item on the agenda would be future meetings. Those would be in August. So this is our only board meeting in July. So we will move to August when we would meet, we will meet on Monday, August ninth and Monday, August twenty-third, both at seven PM in our Northfield District Office Boardroom. So thank you for a great meeting. Everyone have an extended, I don't know, vacation from school board meetings since it will be a month before we will meet. All those in favor, or I'm sorry, I need a motion to adjourn. Moved by Noel. Is there a second by Jeff? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.